President of the Board, and I wanted to take a moment before we start the meeting to reflect on the millions of people who are fleeing their homelands now because of war, civil unrest, famine, violence in South and Central America, in the Middle East, in Afghanistan, in Palestine, and now in Ukraine. May we all think of them with thoughts of peace. All right. We took no action and closed session. Approval of the agenda. Are there any changes?
No changes. Oh, we pulled the consent. That's right. Okay.
I move approval of the agenda.
As amended?
As amended.
I'll second that. That's what I get for not being in here. That's what I get for not being in here when the meeting starts.
Is there any discussion? We have a motion and a second. Again, your preferential vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And I will say yes, the motion is passed. Mission statement. trustee Adams.
Okay, the district mission statement. In partnership with the community, Castro Valley Unified School District educates students in a learning environment that is safe, nurturing, and culturally responsive. Students are guided by excellent, inspired staff utilizing innovative instruction, curricula, and technology.
Thank you. The Board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the Board agenda and within the Board's jurisdiction. The Board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the Board must complete a request to speak form via Google Form at www.cv.k12.ca.us-public-comment/ and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the Board President, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called, and you will either come to the podium to speak or unmute during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the Board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With Board consensus, the President may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the Board may listen to comments from the speakers under public comments but may neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented. Student Board member report.
That is me. All right, so this week is the end of many grading periods for our schools. I myself am wrapping up some schoolwork for third quarter and finishing up some tests. I know that at Creekside, their leadership class is super busy and always thinking of new events. I believe coming up soon, they are holding a fun little dance competition, a basketball tournament, and a Pixar-themed scavenger hunt, which I'm interested to see what we'll figure out. Chabot Elementary, their parent club is doing an online auction as a fundraiser, which I think is super creative for their, sorry, for their parents' club, and items include like gift baskets, services, tickets to sporting events, and more. At CVHS, we also have a lot of stuff going on. This Monday, actually, two days ago, we had our ASB forum, so the candidates for next year's CVHS ASB officers all gave speeches, and we were asked interview questions, and the voting takes place. Today's the last day to vote, and tomorrow the results will be announced. Also, this has been in the works for a while, and it's finally here. Grease the Musical will be this Friday and Saturday evening, as well as next Friday and Saturday evening at 7:00 p.m. There's also a 2:00 p.m. showing on the 13th and 20th, which is those Sundays. And coming up soon, we have our annual iconic Ladies Flag Football, also known as Powderpuff and Spirit Boys, which will be in the first week of April, which I'm excited for because I myself, as a junior, like, I didn't do that my freshman year because of COVID, so this will be the first time back in a while. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Okay, we'll move on to school report, presentations and recognitions.
Yes, tonight we have our adult school, and I'm excited to actually have Mr. Beth Cutter, who's our director, come up and start us off. Welcome.
Good evening. Thanks to see everyone. I thank you Board President Theodore and the members of the Board, and Superintendent Amati and members of Cabinet for having us here tonight. Tonight, we're going to share about two key program areas at the adult school, and we'll be highlighting the ways in which our programs support our immigrant community and our adults that are working towards their diploma and their GED. The first is our ESL program. We have approximately 245, a little more than that, students in our classes. We're offering daytime and evening, as well as online and in-person. So some of the changes with the pandemic have created additional choice for students, and that's something that we'll be continuing. We offer career classes that are specific for English language learners, and we have two this year, Direct Support Professional, which we offer completely at Cbase, and a Behavioral Health Certificate, which is a partnership with Chabot College. We're pretty excited about that. It's a new kind of partnership and one that we hope to replicate going forward. For that, we provide an ESL instructor that collaborates with the Chabot instructor and provides support for a cohort of students that are taking the classes at Chabot to earn a certificate. This year, we started a new class called Get Focused, Stay Focused, and our teachers do that when that is here with us tonight. We're, another one we're very excited about, always looking to try new things to support our learners. This one is articulated with Chabot and has worked out really well for students that are advanced ESL, that are exiting our regular ESL classes and ready to take a next step. In that class, they develop a 10-year plan and map out how they're going to reach their career goals. Okay, so most of the rest of this presentation will be some videos prepared by our students, and I'm really excited to share them with you. So I reached out to our teachers and asked them to contact some of our students and ask them to share a video answering one or more of the questions that you see in front of you. So how has Castro Valley Adult and Career Education helped to reach your goals? What impacts has the adult education program had on your life? And what are you doing now that you weren't able to do before you took the classes at Cbase? And the first video is a wonderful woman who's here tonight that we'll be honoring a little bit later. Her name is Angisa Khadr Don, and you can hear some of what she said. I do have to say, I end up having to edit down the videos a little bit because our students did have a lot to say, so if anyone wants the unabridged versions, I'm happy to share those too.
My name is Angisa Khadr Don. I'm originally from Afghanistan. I have been living in U.S. since August 2017. All my ESL teachers have been so supportive. Not only did they teach me the U.S. culture and language, they also connected me to resources that helped me in a new country. My teacher wrote even helped me in bad circumstances of Afghanistan by contacting and writing emails to U.S. senators and representatives. Since entering the Castro Valley Adult School, I really noticed many changes in my life, from improving my English to knowing about myself, gaining confidence, and making connections, coming back to the society, to the community, and also, after a long time, finding my career path. I'm really grateful for my all and for each of my kind and respectful teachers. I wouldn't be where am I now without your guidance and support. Thank you.
Great.
My name is.
So in addition to our career classes that are specifically targeted for English language learners, we have other high-quality career training programs, and these are accessible to students from a wide range of backgrounds. You can see the list there of our Medical Academy, which is our largest program. We also have wastewater treatment plant operations, and our teachers do a great job of supporting our immigrant students in these classes as well. And our next video is from our student Fan Zhang He, who was one of our recent graduates of the Clinical Medical Assistance Program.
Hi all, my name is Diana, I'm medical assistant at Kaiser. I completed my CMA course in June 2021. The instructors there are friendly and knowledgeable. They well-prepared me for my path in medical field. The office staffs are helpful and supportive. They helped me connect with Kaiser for my externship, and I was able to be hired shortly after. Without them, I won't be able to achieve where I am. Again, thank you very much to all the staffs there who support us to achieve our.
So one of the things that struck me with these videos is, although it wasn't in the question or the prompt, that the students are thinking the staff. So they're sometimes by name and other times by just referring to their teachers and the support staff, and I think it really speaks to the relationships that our staff develop with the students, and I'll come back to that in a moment as to why that's so important, just as much as in K-12, and I would argue maybe even more so for many of our students.
Hi all, my name is Diana.
Okay, in addition to ESL and career training programs, some other ways that we support our immigrant community, we partner with local organizations like Upwardly Global and the International Rescue Committee to provide trainings and connect students with services. In fact, one of our instructors who's here also serves as our transition specialist and really goes out of her way to curate resources for our immigrant community. We also offer citizenship preparation, and so we brought that back this year. We're very happy to do that. We will have served over 45 students in the class this year, and so far, six have gotten their citizenship, so we're happy about that. And I want to share the video from Lita Gasper.
Hi, everybody. I am very happy today because I am a United States citizen today, for which I thankful and of my school, Castro Valley Adult and Career Education, and my teachers, Kathleen, Lynette, Cindy, and Teresa, who taught me English and all that helped me succeed. Thank you so much.
So the second program that I want to just take a couple of minutes to highlight is our adult high school diploma and GED program. So again, thinking about those relationships and how important they are, I think this Board is really well aware that, you know, we're working to change systems that are not built equitably, and so we know that not all people get the same first opportunity, and adult education is a place where a second opportunity can result in real-life outcomes for people. Our GED and diploma program, we've made some changes, again, some positive changes from what we learned during the pandemic. So we started by improving our intake program, or intake process, to do a bit more goal-setting with students and a little bit more relationship building from the outset. And so as part of that, students really look at what they need to finish, whether it's a number of units or a number of GED tests, how much time they can spend, and we go through a little spreadsheet that was created by Keith and is being implemented well by the team to help them see, you know, if I can put in five hours per week, what does that look like? When will I achieve my goal? What if I can do 10 hours per week? They also meet weekly with their teacher, and some of our students have started calling their teacher their advocate, which we really like. We think that kind of captures what we're going for. They have choice, again, like the ESL program, so daytime, evening, in-person, online, whatever works for them. And we also have added a new structure that we're calling GED cohorts, where they get to meet as a class. It's a more traditional class setting. They work through the material together at a set pace, and they even test at the end together, so it's a little bit more of a community feel within that group. So I'm happy to share the video from Tony Bush Jr., who recently earned his diploma.
Hello, my name is Tony Bush Jr., and I am a graduate of Castro Valley Adult. I wanted to get my diploma, and going to that school made it happen. The staff was amazing. Anytime I needed help with a course that I was taking, they were there, from, you know, the study sessions to, you know, doing call-ins, to check on you, emails, to trying to, you know, guide you with tutoring, like, they are freaking dope. Well, so like, I just want to say thank you to everyone there for helping me achieve this goal in my life. Couldn't have did it without you all, and I appreciate you so much.
I'm thinking of a slogan for our next t-shirt. I just had that idea. I think that's it. Yeah, so the last slide here is just our data dashboard, which you have in front of you, that we put together each year that shows a little bit more of our data. And again, I just want to wrap up by thanking the School Board for your support of adult education. I think it really is a testament to the phrase "all means all." Again, you know, we know that second chances are important, and outcomes for adults result in outcomes for kids and communities, and so I appreciate your support, and thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. We have a couple of recognitions, and then we'll come back and ask some questions to you.
Angisa, can you come up? The Governance Team, along with Castro Valley Adult and Career Education, are proud to honor Angisa Khadr Don as an outstanding student. Angisa Khadr Don immigrated to the United States from Afghanistan four years ago and exemplifies the very best of what it means to be a Castro Valley Adult and Career Education student. She is a lifelong learner who makes the most of opportunities and approaches her learning with a quiet strength and determined attitude. She is a consistent and hard-working student in ESL and Citizenship Preparation classes. This fall, she also participated in the Get Focused, Stay Focused program and created a 10-year career and education plan. With the support of her husband, Nazir, who is here tonight, and her two sons, Ms. Khadr Don is a perfect example of resilience and determination. She has persevered through a great deal and gives of her own time through a women's support group. This spring, she is planning to take the Adult and Career Education Community Health Worker and Health Navigator course, laying very solid groundwork for her future success. Ms. Khadr Don is a student that makes our district proud, and we are honored to recognize her success. The Governance Team joins Castro Valley Adult and Career Education in honoring Angisa Khadr Don as an outstanding student.
Ms. Khadr Don, would you like to introduce your family that came with you?
First of all, I'd like to thank you all, my teachers, my school. Thank you for your support, and actually, we came to U.S. on August 2017, with my husband and my son. Now I have two sons, my youngest son born here, and we are living with my husband and my two sons. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Board, do we have any questions, comments?
Being a migrant is often not by choice. It's probably one of the bravest human experiences people have to go through, and I just, I'm honored that you're a part of our community, and I want to congratulate you, and thank you for being here. I do have questions for you. The wastewater treatment plant operator is such a specific thing. I'm just wondering, can you just tell us more about that? Is that in partnership with our sanitation district or other agencies? And then I have another question.
Yeah, so that, it's about a nine-month program that's right now a hybrid program, primarily one night per week distance. The students have an opportunity to do an externship, so it's not a direct partnership with one agency, but we place them at multiple different locations. I know they're placed in Hayward and San Leandro.
And I was curious, I heard talk about like coming up with 10-year plans. If someone completes a GED in our district, what are the pathways that are discussed after you finish a GED? Are there conversations about next steps? And if you could just maybe provide an example of how that that conversation plays out?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. So I'm happy to answer the question. There's a part of me that wants to have Lynette come up as our transition specialist.
Come on down.
To be willing to, because basically what we do is you're, she's walking up, I'll explain, so she's our transition specialist in addition to being an ESL teacher. And so she meets with students as they're finishing diploma and GED. So are you, are you talking about?
Yep. So every student has access to me, whether they're current students or they've graduated. If they don't know their pathway, I've got this great software that asks them a million questions, actually 36 questions, and it gives them ideas. And then we look at what would be the pathway for them. So sometimes somebody is 40 years old, they don't want to spend 10 years at school, but they want to work with people. So we'll look at maybe our Community Health Worker Program or Clinical Medical Assisting, or they might want to go another way and actually go to a university. So I help them apply to college, or get financial aid, or do their resume, and hook them up with the resources. So I suddenly got nervous, sorry. Like, no, that's all right. No, I think it's all emotional watching Angisa's thing. And Angisa's a good example where Rubicon Services is going to be providing, we owe funds, to help fund her job training. Does that answer?
Thank you again. It's wonderful to see that we have the citizenship program as well. What an amazing opportunity. I don't know if people appreciate how fragile like having citizenship can be for many, if you're a forced migrant in this world, and I've had quite a few friends who've become U.S. citizens, and it's really powerful. And I think for those of us who were born with that privilege, it's an opportunity to reflect about what that means to those who earn it that way. So thank you for all you're doing.
Yeah, thank you for a very nice presentation. It's always great to hear from the adult school. I'm always amazed, you know, this is a nice summary of all the myriad activities that you guys are in up there. And there are two things on there that sort of struck me, I have to say. One is that we're drawing students from a lot of different places. That's pretty amazing to me. They're coming from over the hill to come to our school, and I think that's terrific. And the second one is, and it goes a little bit to the GED student that you showed, it's fantastic that we have yet another safety net. We're supposed to send students out of our school system here with a high school education, a diploma, or a GED, and I notice on here that in last year, you gave 30, either diplomas or, because you can get a high school diploma at the adult school as well, as well as a GED. But that's 30 more that we got that we missed the first couple of times, and I think that's just fantastic that we have that opportunity to bring them along and give them a better chance for a good future. So thanks to all of you for all that work.
When I saw that CV Adult School was coming, I was really happy. I had thought about graduation last year and the unbelievably interesting, inspiring speakers who are, were amazing. And also, from back in the time when I worked with the union, I remembered some terrific teachers at your school as well, really, really good teachers. So keep up the good work, and it's great that you give people, like, I didn't, I didn't get his first name, but Bush Jr., a second chance.
Dr. Cutter, thank you so much for joining us, and thank you so much for your team who came to support you. You know, I just love the diverse offerings that we provide to our community that continues to enrich our community in so many different ways, and this data is, is data that shows that, but you can see it in the presentations from the students that have received the training and education to continue down their path. I just think that that's the biggest win, is seeing the outcomes and seeing that people get second chances. So thank you, and thank you all of you.
I mean, I'm not trying to repeat everything, but it's always so wonderful to hear from adult school, and we've got an amazing team there with Keith, with Megan, and Beth Cutter, and the just incredible staff that you see here, and the teachers, the office staff. It's just a wonderful, wonderful place. And obviously, you know, when you look at the different program, like, you know, ESL, where Angisa, actually, not only just ESL, but career development, healthcare professionals, it's amazing how many people actually get jobs right after. It's a very wonderful program. And then obviously, citizenship and GED, I think the one piece that a lot of, maybe that's unique to this adult school is the goal-setting and how you follow the kids, the students. And like Annette said, you know, if they need to apply to a college, I'm going to help them with that. Because a lot of times, you know, people think, well, we'll just make it available, and it just happens, and it's so important that we actually sometimes do a lot more than just share, here's the information, and actually, you know, walk people through that. So I just want to thank you for everything you're doing, but the adults at the adult school, the teachers, the staff there are just incredible, and the relationships they build, like you said about graduation, it's just a beautiful event, but the stories are something else. So it's just wonderful. Thank you so much, and we're so lucky to have you here in Castro Valley.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your support of our school.
Thank you for your presentation, and congratulations, Ms. Khadr Don. It was really nice to see your video, and I'm glad that you were honored this evening. Director Cutter, I had a question. How, do you have waiting lists to access any of the programs, and how long are they? What's the most popular program?
They're all exceedingly popular.
Of course, of course.
Yeah, we have waiting lists. Well, ESL, we keep running interest list and I think as of this morning, there are like 15 people. So we will probably be potentially looking at taking in students for the summer session so they don't have to wait until fall. Our longest waiting list is for the Strides program in terms of the length of time. So the Strides program is our Adults with Disabilities program. And in that, we are actually probably going to be, well, we're anticipating adding some spots for our paid internship program. And then also within the Strides Day program, we do have some spots, so hoping to get some people in for that. But yeah, we, we kind of always have waiting lists for those classes. And then the CTE classes, we offer them frequently enough, we don't tend to generate a waiting list, people sign up for the next orientation.
That's great, thank you. Would you like to introduce any of your staff that are here?
Yeah.
Please.
I would love to. Yes, we have Megan Everly and Keith Naumann, who are two assistant principals. We've got Ruth Rosenthal, who's one of our ESL teachers. We've got Lynette Escobar, who is one of our ESL teachers and also our transition specialist. And Paul Escobar, who's one of our ESL paraprofessionals.
Thank you very much.
Oh, gosh. Well, and, and I was going to make some kind of joke, but I won't. And of course, Shelley Sherman, so Michelle Sherman, who's one of our CTE instructors, but she's in camouflage right now, so I, yeah, yeah. Is there anyone else? No, I think, I think that's it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to CVEF Innovation Grant Program presentation.
Your presentation, welcome.
Thank you so much for this invitation. My name is Sarah Dempsey. I am a board member for Castro Valley Educational Foundation. Excuse me, I have to go my throat. I'm also the Innovation Grants Chair for this year. So as you can see, we've been funding teachers' school grants for the last number of years here. Recently, we redesigned the grants program to be an innovation grant. The idea here is to have something that's creative, unique, really complements educational experience in the classroom. We want it to happen where it's a situation where it benefits multiple students, multiple years. It's not a one-time-only project. We restructured it this way, anyone can apply. We had, we would like to have applications from parents, kids, teacher, staff. It's mostly been teachers. We do advertise it to everyone. So the process is that we post it in October, application is open in November, December folks apply, November they apply, December we review it, and then they have all of spring semester to use those funds and fund those projects. If for some reason we can't fund them, like this year, we had nine applications, we couldn't fund all of them. There are three folks who couldn't get funding because maybe it was a one-time-use project or didn't meet our criteria. I went to Superintendent Amadi and said, help, what can we do? And we found other money in the district or through the principals to fund those projects. Every year we do this. So if, if teachers apply and they just don't meet our criteria, we find ways to give them funds. This year, we were able to fund $8,200 in projects for these six teachers. So Canyon, Richard Reyes, is getting a model of an animal and plant cell for sixth grade and it's a 3D model. It's pretty cool. So the kids can conceptualize it off the page into real life. Ms. Instrom at Canyon has a life-size model of a human body, it's a torso. And so again, kids can see inside and see the organs and kind of play around in there. And at Stanton, Heidi Morgan has an outdoor kitchen for her tea can kindergarten outdoor learning experience. This is very hands-on, it's very cute. I can't wait to see the pictures at the end of the school year. And Mr. Rod Barberts at Canyon has this really cool, put a lid on it, innovative engineering project. And I think what happens to your brain if you don't wear a helmet, right? This is an example. Lots of fun things there. Ms. Dyson Roth and Ms. Yee at Canyon requested a 3D printer to print different historical landmarks, protect, print maps for history. And other teachers can use it as well, but that's their primary focus for that. Malia Hall in Palomares asked for a Lego robotics kit for kids and they can use this in multiple classrooms, multiple grade levels. At the high school, they have molecular models for chemistry and biology. I wish I had this when I was in high school because it's really cool. You can go ahead and take apart these molecular structures and then make new molecules and just move things around. Very hands-on approach to science. That was this year and we look forward to doing this all over again next year. What will happen is the teachers are, go ahead, they're, they're funding their projects right now, they have funding for their projects, I should say. So they're purchasing everything this, the spring. At the end of the semester, they're going to present a report to us with pictures of what they did and how they implemented these in the classrooms. Last year, just for an example, we funded an art project at Canyon. If you had a chance to go to the library and see the big art mural that's up there, that was an innovation grant. Thank you so much for the time.
Do we have any comments from the board or questions?
It's really cute, you should go check it out.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Do we need a break? Okay, we're going to take a quick break. So if anybody wants to leave or needs to leave, they can do so now and we will reconvene at 6:40. Amy, I'm going to assume that we have a representative from CVTA on the line? Why skip CSEA? Is there anyone from, okay.
Just wanted to do a real quick history lesson here and just remind everyone that our E-Board and our bargaining team has been thoughtful and deliberate throughout the last two years. And we appreciate that the board has supported many of our proposals, including extended, extending COVID sick leave and supporting vigorous air filtration systems in all spaces and expanding testing for our students and our staff. All of these agreements exceeded what the county required and we appreciate your commitment to safety. Some of our agreements were arm-wrestled over and our team did not get everything we wanted for our staff and students, but the bargaining process was followed. Last year, we were able to secure an agreement from our members to teach a hybrid schedule even before the vaccine was offered. And when we returned, our teachers taught a true hybrid schedule unlike other districts that held afternoon classes only for tutoring or returned much later than we did or did not return at all. We returned earlier than many districts in the East Bay because of the dedication we have towards our students and community and our ability to work together with CBUSD. We did this all and we kept people safe. We did this by working together and following the process of meeting and bargaining and coming to agreements. We value this process and we know that the board does too. So thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, Mark. Amy, are there any requests to speak on items not on the agenda? Okay. Welcome to our meeting, Sarah.
Hi, good evening. I wanted to comment on two topics this evening. I'll be quick though. First, I want to express my appreciation for the positive changes that I'm seeing with special education in Castro Valley and within our Sopa. I am a member of both the Community Advisory Committee for the Mid-Alameda County Sopa and the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee for our district. Our new Special Education Director and Sopa Director, Kevin Nazario, is leading collaborative discussions within these groups that have me feeling hopeful about improving access to education for all students, strengthening relationships between district staff and parents or caregivers of students, receiving special education services and supporting families as they navigate the IEP process. Second, I would like to advocate that CBUSD continues mandating masking as long as masks are still strongly recommended. I am not advocating for indefinite masking, but it seems to me that if masks are strongly recommended indoors in our county, then continuing to mandate them in public school environments is appropriate, given how much time students are indoors together and the potential impact to families in the community if school transmission increases. One-way masking is not nearly as effective as universal masking. Making it optional sends the message that those who are vulnerable or who have family members that are, don't matter. Virtual learning is an important choice to have, but not everyone is able to access their education that way. I know that my children cannot and being high-risk, it gives me a very impossible choice if masking is removed in schools. Please continue requiring masking indoors whenever it is strongly recommended by Alameda County to enable those with high-risk family members to continue to feel safe at school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fetter. And do we have another speaker? That was it? Okay, thank you. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda.
I will move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All right, Jennifer, your preferential vote.
Yes.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And I will say yes, so the consent agenda is approved. All right, moving on to reports, discussion and action items. Item A. CBOC.
That's right. This is very exciting. I think I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Chan, who works with our awesome CBOC.
Thank you. Yes, good evening. Yes, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, we have our members here. Stan Stedelman, who's our chair this year, will present the annual report and it's attached to the packet, so.
My name is Stan Stedelman and I am the Chairman of the Measure G Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. I'm pleased to submit the committee's annual report for 2021 of the Measure G Bond Program. On behalf of the committee, I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors, Superintendent Armani and the district staff for the efforts that they put in over the past 12 months in dealing with the issues surrounding the pandemic, while at the same time continuing to move forward on the various numerous projects funded by Measure G. Much has been accomplished in the way of classroom modernization, school accessibility, solar arrays and playfield improvements. I would also like to thank the staff for their openness and transparency in discussing costs and budget issues impacted by the various material shortages and the recent inflationary issues going on. That's my report. Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions?
I'll just make a comment and I just, I think it's really, it's, it's pretty awesome when members of the committee step up and do something like this. I don't know who hears a calling to want to be on a citizens oversight committee for a bond, but it's been really impressive to have your point of view and your oversight to ensure that we're doing what we say we're going to do. And what I've seen from this district from day one is a real belief that every penny that we have, we're going to try, try to multiply as best, as best we can and do the best with the limited dollars we have. So I just want to thank you for taking the time and to everyone in the committee to do that.
Gary and Gary.
Yeah, just say thanks also, just to reiterate what Mike said. You know, it's great to hear from you guys because it's a separate set of eyes on what's going on with, that's a lot of money for Castro Valley, for sure. Last month, last meeting, we heard from our auditor, who also looked with a different viewpoint on the Measure G funds and we were pleased that they also had no findings, which with them is the best report you can get. So the two of you, that's, it's just great to have that extra look and different look at make sure that we're doing the right thing with the money. So thanks very much for that, to all of you for all that work. Thank you.
And I just, I mean, echoing what everybody said, I think we're fortunate to have this group. I know some of the other members are here. You always ask really great questions and it just feels really great that to have a Citizens Bond Oversight Committee approve and look at all of the different things and be able to say to the community that we're doing the right thing. So thank you. I know it takes time away from other wonderful things you could be doing, but I was wondering if you want to introduce the rest of your team.
While we have Todd and.
Thank you all very much for your service. All right, we'll move on to item B, Expanded Learning Opportunities Program.
So we're very excited to have an amazing group with us here today that's going to be sharing a bit about our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. For those who don't know, the state of California recently created the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program to help support families after school. And Ms. Chan is going to share a bit about ELOP.
Thank you, yes. As I have an honor to present a few of the slides and I'm going to turn it over to our invited guests tonight. So Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, just make sure, there we go. If you recall, we reported to you that it's included in the budget this year. If you recall, we reported to you that it's included in the budget this year. The governor set aside 1.75 billion in the current year, and this is a new, ongoing program intended to provide access to our unduplicated students. And then the offer and to provide requirements, so which you see in the current year, for districts, the eligible districts, which is Castro Valley, we are, we must offer a program to at least all classroom-based unduplicated students in TK to six, and the access to at least 50% of the unduplicated students. And then, of course, the next year, that is going to be for all, so offer it to all, and then provide access to all of our unduplicated students. The program requirements, we just kind of just added a few things here. At least 30 days, well, let's actually start on the left side. It's a before and after-school opportunities plus instructional time. You've heard at least nine hours on school days, and then 30 days of nine-plus hours Expanded Learning Days during school breaks. The ratio is 20 to 1, student to adult ratio, and then it goes down to 10 to 1 for the program that serves TK and K students. The, we also have, at the bottom there, it must generally conform with the after-school education and safety program requirements. Apologize, this is like a lot of information here, but really, that's just what the ACES program requirement is, and that's really the intent, is to follow this program. And also, what I do want to highlight is the, we provide, and we will be providing the nutritious snack meal or both. So, that's what we're working on. Additional information on the program details, we may charge students, but must waive the fee for students that are eligible, and then we can also can take a look at the sliding scale that considers income and ability for families to pay. The, we may, the state is allowing us to contract with a third party, such as the county, community-based organization, and child care providers. And then, of course, this is always a question that we get all the time, that the program requirement is focused on enrollment, not attendance, because what it is, is, it's actually, it's a flexibility on the student if they would like to attend for certain classes or just an hour because they need, they need help with their homework, and that is actually allowed. So, so I wanted to share that. And, and of course, the FRPM at the bottom is Free and Reduced Price Meal. That's what it means. Okay, with that, I'm going to turn it over to a couple of the members from PlayCV. And we have Amy Ramos, who's the Director, and Shelley Sherman, the Associate Director of PlayCV.
Thank you, Suzy. Thank you, Board, for allowing us to come. Amy and I would actually like to turn it over and invite our Board President, Sarah Dempsey, and our Board Treasurer, Justin Kemp, to come do our presentation tonight.
Just a reminder for the public and for everybody is that there was an RFP, and as going through the process, actually, at the last meeting, the resolution would approve to sign the contract with them. So, we're really, really lucky to have them.
Thank you. We're really excited to do this. So, thank you so much. Again, my name is Sarah Dempsey. I'm the President of PlayCV. PLAY stands for Programs, Learning, and Activities for Youth in Castro Valley. Here's our agenda for this evening. We're really going to go over who we are, what we're doing, and what are our goals. Here's our mission and vision. PlayCV is a nonprofit organization created by parents and community activists who are dedicated to our students in our community. We want to provide equitable after-school programs for K-12 students in our community, and we're committed to providing an inclusive and welcoming environment for everyone. Here's our board. This is our amazing team. We are all involved in other areas of our community, and we've all come together for PlayCV, with a great executive team led by Amy and Shelley. We were selected because of our diversity of experience, our identities, our education, and our bringing to this position. Here are our goals. Our primary focus is on K-12 programs and activities. We do plan to expand to include family and community events. We want to remove barriers to educational opportunities. We want to go beyond K-12 schools and engage and collaborate with our community, with businesses, with those beyond our K-12 schools. We're a nonprofit. We will collect funds for activities and registrations, and anything left over at the end of the year, we plan on giving back to the school district. We want to provide a safe place for kids to learn, to thrive, to make new friends, and to build lasting communities, or, excuse me, lasting memories. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Justin.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Justin Kemp, serving as a treasurer for the PlayCV Board. So, we have some classes that we're offering now. We started out our program by piloting at Stanton Elementary and Proctor Elementary in current classes, including Journalism, Short Film Making, Comic Book Arch, Masters Art Class, Reading, a couple different reading clubs. At Proctor, we have a fitness hour, and also a speech and debate. We are currently working on brainstorming many new classes, such as Girls Who Code, Personal Finance, Healthy Living, Sports, Eater, Young Engineers, which would include like Robotics, Tech, and Homework Club, and programs to assist with the ELOP. Working, leading up to this, Homework Club was a terminology that we used to kind of describe this after-school program that started as soon as school ended and lasted until 6:00 PM. But then, as we started to talk about different options and giving people or students the ability of taking a Homework Club class for one hour, things started to get really confusing. So, we've come up with a new terminology, basically, a program called the Full Play, which is everything we offer, starting as soon as school ends till 6:00 PM, five days a week. In the Full Play, there is access to our PlayCV classes, such as Journalism or Short Film. There's access to dedicated time for homework or schoolwork, whatever the kids need to work on. Time for physical activities, possibly intramural sports, playground activities, playground games, and free choice. In security and safety of all the students has been a huge priority when coming and putting this together. I know I spent many, many hours on the phone with Amy for coming up with, you know, what is the safest yet fastest way to do this? And the big primary is making sure that we're handing off these kids back to their parents or guardians in a very safe way. And so, what this is showing here is the ability to set this up so that parents' guardians, as they're enrolling their kids, they'll be able to set themselves a personal PIN. We'll have a kiosk when they come to pick up. They can check out on that kiosk, and then we can hand off their child or any caregiver that is not the main parent or guardian, doesn't have that PIN. We give those families the ability to set as many authorized people as they need. We'll have a site supervisor there, check IDs, making sure that everything is, everything is correct before we release any kid. In addition to our after-school program, there is also summer camps, part of the ELOP program, but also in addition to, you know, part of the core program that PlayCV is putting together. Six one-week camps at a variety of different sites. I'm geared towards sports, such as soccer, basketball, volleyball, science, such as nature science, hikes, tech, robotics, and then creative arts, journalism, short film, story writing, et cetera. And the, this would service both kids that are in summer school as an after-school activity for those kids, as well as open to anyone else who wants to enroll. And as with our core program or the after-school program, each of those classes, a big part of that is the tying in some sort of family engagement. And so, that would be included in the summer camps as well. An example is the short film class is 10 weeks long. The students are writing, directing, filming their own short film, and then at the end of that session, sorry, families will be invited to come view that film at the Castro Valley Arts Center. Planned growth, like I mentioned, we started out piloting the program at Stanton and at Proctor. After spring break, we'll have, we'll open it up to include a total of five campuses. And that will be the Full Play after-school program, as well as individual classes that students can enroll for, enroll for. And then, future expansion is programs geared towards seventh and through 12th grade and including getting our WASC accreditation. That's what I have. Thank you. Any questions?
That's amazing. Thank you very much for your presentation. Lavender?
So, I know all of you are involved in many different things throughout our community, and what started out either at the Education Foundation, at the Play, After-School Play Program, is these people coming together, caring for our community and dedicating themselves to our community in many different ways. So, I just want to honor you and your service to our community and your continued commitment.
Thank you. Have a good one.
If I could just add a couple of things. I think something that a lot of families, especially as we get closer to the summer, they email us and say, what do you have for summer? Because it's hard to keep kids occupied. So, this is just amazing, what you're going to do over the summer with all of the different programs. But, but during the year, what we're talking about is basically, you know, students will finish their homework. They can then actually go home and enjoy being with their family. They've had their physical activity. They've had their sports. They've had enrichment. Oftentimes, the reason for this program from the state was to offer students who often do not get the opportunity to have enrichment and that kind of support. So, it's, it's a noble cause, and we're very happy that the state actually came up with this funding. So, and I want to, I just want to thank them, and I want to thank Ms. Chan, because she's been working on this for quite a while, and I think we're very lucky to have this available because if you've had ACES program in your district, you've already had that kind of program. So, now they're getting paid for it even more. For us, we've never qualified for ACES, so this is the first. And oftentimes, now districts that don't have PlayCV or something like that, we're going to have to figure out how to do it, because this funding comes to every district. And if they don't have the program, they have to give the money back. So, thank you.
Well, I'm really glad we had the program. Gary?
Yeah, maybe I missed this, but, well, first of all, I think it's a terrific program, and I wish you the best with it. I think it's a wonderful addition to Castro Valley. So, I think you have classes starting or started, or how many kids do you have enrolled? And you said after the break, you were going to expand to other schools. I think you said that. I mean, what does it look like now with enrollment and so forth?
We are on two campuses now, Stanton and Proctor. We have six, seven classes at each campus, and between 10 and 20 students. Most of our classes at Proctor are full. And the Stanton Parent Association Scholarship, they provided 15 scholarships, so we were able to actually fill up some classes at Stanton with scholarships, which was amazing that their parent association came up with that money to support students. And we had a lot of students, actually, that were like, free? Really? Parent Association's paying for it. People are really, what that means when you say, yeah, your kid can come and take this. But, so that's our enrollment right now, and we're working with Independent, CDE, and Marshall, and we'll be on those campuses mid-April.
Sounds great. Thanks. Good luck with it.
Mike?
Before I get to everyone in the matching t-shirts, I do have a question for Suzy. For federal reduced meals, for those who qualify, I'm just acknowledging that we're kind of in a moment where we have universal access. How are we doing that now? How are we collecting those data?
We're actually still collecting the, we still have the application, so from the federal, right? So, we still use that. And then, in addition to that, and in order to capture as many families, we have the alternate income form that they can fill out, and so that's what we're doing. We're actually going to, we're starting to think about how we want to do that for next year, because for this purpose as well, right? We want to make sure that we, we offer or we have that form so we can then make sure that we have the students that are eligible, the families that are eligible, they can participate, and it's for free. So, yeah, so we still have those two forms, and we'll continue to promote, or at least make sure that all the families are aware of this program, and then they can in turn fill out the form, which hopefully our, then our unduplicated account will go up, and then more money will come our way.
Thank you. Now to the matching t-shirts. Thank you all so much for just building this. This is a really cool thing that's evolving before us. I don't know if this question's more for the district or for PlayCV. Do we have a sense of what percentage of each school we want engaged with this? Does this look like 10% of our school age population, 20%? Have you put some thought to that?
Honestly, I don't think we put a cap on it.
Okay.
We base it on need, and we move forward.
So, but for ELOP, as Ms. Chan said, it's 50% this year, offered to 50% in next year, all of them, but they can choose to enroll or not.
I'm just mindful, as a parent who used to pay a lot for childcare services, this is just a very unique spin. This isn't childcare. This is a very different, interactive take on it. And from a financial point of view, wow, if only this had existed. But I'm just curious, does this impact onsite childcare from other providers at our district at all? Not to be awkward.
It could, but most often, people who have their students in those programs want them to be there from like in the morning and in the afternoon, and it's a kind of a different measure. But while they're there, they could actually, you know, also participate.
Right, right now, we have students that attend both. So, when the class gets out, we walk them down to the daycare, bring them back up. So, it is their choice. But it is still a paid model. It is something that anybody can attend.
Thanks for doing it, and really, thank you for basing it on equity, and I really appreciate your approach to this. Thank you.
Dolly?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think that this program is really terrific. It's great that the state has put this together, but that, or, you know, said that this should be for all districts, but it's great to see Castro Valley has, as usual, ahead of the curve, and you guys are part of that, ahead of the curve. Girls Who Code, I've heard about this and suggested, you know, for some of my students to try that, and it'd be really cool if it's in the program, especially, I must say that, because this is Month of March, Women's History Month, so.
All right, thank you very much for your presentation tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we are moving right along to Superintendent's District Updates.
All right, thank you. Most of our presentation tonight is about COVID. One of these years, we're going to get away from COVID. So, just an update on Alameda County Public Health Department case. Cases have, as you have heard, have calmed down significantly overall, as well as in highly impacted communities, which was something that was very important for them to pay attention to. Hospitalizations are well below their peak. Masks are strongly recommended in public indoor settings, including in schools, but not required as of March 12th. So this is Alameda County Public Health. And this is following this, the California Department of Public Health, where that was actually announced a couple of weeks ago. Wearing high quality, well-fitting masks can protect the wearer and limit the spread of COVID-19. So although it's just, it's not required, it is strongly recommended. And then all other guidelines such as quarantining, isolating, testing, et cetera, will remain. So nothing else has changed at all. Again, you know, the, the most important piece that we can keep reminding ourselves is to stay home if you test positive for COVID or are experiencing symptoms of COVID. That's, you know, a repeated message that we want to share and the county wants to share. So some of the mitigations that continue, as I was saying, these, things haven't changed, is availability of masks. So masks are for our district and throughout the county, actually. Masks are available for students and staff at all times and the state has actually provided us quite a bit of that. Contact tracing, we, you know, following COVID contact tracing, notification and tracing protocols, including the C D P H, the, what they call group notification guidance for K-12 schools, which means if there is an exposure in the classroom, the entire class gets notified. But they do get to stay in and they just have to monitor for symptoms. So as I said, if in this case, especially now that the requirement that they have changed, one of the things they've also changed is if a classroom has an exposure, then all students and staff from that classroom then would wear a mask for 10 days. Antigen and PCR testing, mobile antigen testing for us will continue. And that's something that, again, the public health has encouraged. We have it once a week at all school sites. But because we haven't had too many folks actually for symptomatic testing go to Adobe, maybe we had one or two some days, if any, that we are going to reduce that to one day a week, but we're going to move it to this, a new location, possibly the C F A, because we actually have programs at Adobe starting off. And then PCR testing remains at the Castro Valley Center for the Arts every day. So it's available, continues to be available. Vaccination for our, for Castro Valley, 67.6% of 5 to 11-year-olds are fully vaccinated and that's incredible. And then 78.7% of our 12 to 17-year-olds are fully vaccinated. So that's great and we'll continue to encourage vaccination. This is our case rates. I mean, and, you know, there have been days where we've had none or one or two. So a huge change from when we started in January. So, so far, we've been in school, you know, for, for March, we've had 12 cases of students and one staff and that's it. So in Castro Valley, based on the guidelines that we have, we're going to continue to follow A C D P H, I switched it, guidance. We ask that people stay home and test if experiencing any COVID symptoms. We will continue to a robust testing program that's available. We have adequate air ventilation in all classrooms. We are going to continue to encourage vaccination and plan vaccination clinics as much as possible. Masking is strongly recommended, but not required from March 14th. But we are asking for patience as we move in that direction, especially this first week, as we work with our labor partners to communicate that message to everybody and kind of get students ready. Communicating with students about the change is important. So not only in the classroom, but also families working with their children to kind of talk about what's, you know, why is it important to wear a mask if that's, you know, that's the conversation they're going to have? And why is it important to actually be very careful about comments we might be making to other students, even if their decision is different than ours? And then reminders, no one will be prevented from wearing a mask indoors or outdoors. And again, like I said, we will have masks read always available and they are strongly recommended indoors. So I, just a reminder to please speak, you know, about your choice with an expectation as a family. Remind them to be kind to one another regardless of the other person's choice. And students are entitled to in-person instruction this year. I think it's, that's an important point as if you remember last year when we had distance learning, we basically, you know, at the end of the year, the legislation that was passed said schools need to be open and children need to be offered or they're entitled to in-person instruction. So we cannot force any student to go to virtual. Parents can ask to have an independent study, but we could not say to students that you will need to not be in the classroom. So with that, again, just kind of during that, that next week, as we get this message out to families and work together to, to make some accommodations and, and adjustments, it's really important to be patient.
Ms. President Whitaker?
Thank you. And one thing I just want to thank the district and everyone is that, you know, our decisions have been based on the Alameda County Public Health Department since the pandemic and we've been consistent. And I just want to appreciate staff for continuing to push towards science and, and following the guidance in a consistent way. And just as the pandemic started, it was very stressful for all of us to go through that and have to have new requirements and that change. Coming into new changes and easing ourselves out of the pandemic is also going to be impactful for everyone as well. And, and all I ask for our families and our kids and our teachers and our community is just to be kind to one another in this transition. We're all facing a lot and know that we're, we're all going through a lot, not just because of the pandemic and the, the changes that we're facing, but a lot of things are going on in the world that are very stressful as well. So just wanted to send that message of kindness and thanks.
Yeah, so. Any other comments about COVID?
Mike?
A comment and a question. I, I really appreciated what Mark was saying in his comments. I, I think there's been a Castro Valley way that we've done things here and it's paying off now. And I just want to acknowledge to Lavender saying, these past two years have been tough and having a lot of empathy and kindness right now is really important. But it's just so impressive to think of the investments we've made in whether it's ventilation, whether it's our, our testing program, I hope is something that you're proud of, the fact that you and Amy and others on your staff learned to, to do tests, right? That shows such a level of commitment that I think is, I, I hope more people appreciate that about you and how we as a district are invested in this. I do want to acknowledge for those families who may be concerned about a mentally vulnerable child, what, what should that conversation look like? If, if I'm a parent and I'm concerned, what should I do?
Yeah, I think just clarifying with, with, you know, children that this is why it's important again, I mean, masking has been effective in preventing and spreading the disease. So, and I would say that I, I could see the vast majority of folks continuing to wear masks. I know that I will do the same when I'm in a, you know, not here. But I, I think really clarifying, but it's important for families to know that if that's a decision they make for their child to come, to always wear a mask, it is a conversation that happens at home because it would be really difficult for us to have a list of like who, which parent wants which one. So just be real clear about why. I think, you know, even young children understand and they've been wearing their masks. They've done a great job. Everyone has followed direction. So just have a conversation with your children.
I want to be very optimistic about what's going to be happening in the world. I, I just also want to be mindful that I don't think we can go out in the streets on Monday and celebrate that this is over. Like, I, I think that we've been made prepared in these past two years. You know, we've had to reimagine so much about how do you run a school district? And I think it's important that we remember that we may be called to action to go to mandatory masking or other mitigations should we see other surges.
Yeah, and that's a really important point that, you know, this is now, we know that we may have other surges and, and really the conversation at, with the health department was you want to mandate things when they're absolutely necessary so that it's actually effective. So that when we do need to have those mandates, we will have them in place and we will follow them. Anybody else? Well, there are a couple of other things happening. Lots of other wonderful things are happening, but I just wanted to share with everybody that we do have a great, again, adult school. When we talk about all the programs adult school has, you know, when I think about what they have done during the pandemic with all the parent information nights and, and trainings, here's another one. Parent Circle for LGBTQ plus Community, April 6th, 13th and 20th. It's a series of workshops, Wednesday, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. And this is a really wonderful program that I know is very unique to Castro Valley. And I want to thank Beth Cutter as well as Marion Meadows and Nick McMaster, I mean, that, and at Services for coming up with, you know, some of these great workshops. And then California Healthy Kids Survey is coming. Email sent to all families and links to parent surveys on district website is right here. So we ask that, you know, you take a few minutes. I know it's kind of long, but it is a really important survey that is anonymous and gives us a lot of good information about how we can, you know, further our, and improve our supports for our students. I think that's it.
All right, Amy, we have a couple of comments on.
To be clear about the survey, it's completely anonymous.
Yes.
And it's very valuable data, but.
Yep, completely anonymous.
Completely anonymous. Thanks.
Hello.
Hi, Jada, welcome to our meeting.
Hi, I wanted to know, I wanted to know, I wanted to know. I wanted to know when, if we are vaccinated, do we have to keep wearing a mask or, or not?
Yeah, I think she was, was she asking if?
If she's fully vaccinated, yeah.
Oh, it's regardless of whether you're vaccinated or not, Jada, you, it's recommended that you wear a mask. So mask wearing is really important and recommended, but not required. But whether you're vaccinated or not, it doesn't make a difference.
Right. Rula, welcome to our meeting.
Hi, Rula, you can unmute. Sorry, thank you. Thank you so much for allowing me to make a comment. I'm a mom of two kids at Palomeros Elementary, a first grader and a third grader. And I had initially hoped to make a comment earlier before you had announced your aligning with the state and county about the mask mandates. But I just wanted to express how very, very pleased I am that you have aligned that, you know, it's been, it's been a tough couple of years and our kiddos have sacrificed a lot. And, and I'm just really, really excited, maybe a little bit emotional. I'm so happy that they'll finally be able to see each other's faces and breathe properly and regain that sense of normalcy. So I just wanted to thank the board very much for aligning with the, the latest guidelines. And I appreciate everything that you've done for the last two years to keep our kiddos safe. So thank you so much.
All right. All right, so we will move on to item D, certify financial conditions, second interim reports. So this is the 2020, 2021, 22 second interim report. I'm going to skip through these slides here because these are the ones that I, I always include for the, for the public about the, each reporting period and what they represent and the, including the certification. So moving on to the revenue from first interim, these are changes from first interim, sorry, not changes, but revenue from first interim to second interim. So I have a column there for the, all the revenue from L C F F all the way to the local revenue. So this is a total combined unrestricted and restricted revenue. So as you can see there, first interim, L C F F to the second interim, it says, it's a minor change of 5,900. And then for federal is also about $47,000 difference. But the state you're, you're seeing a change there of, it's actually an increase of $534,000 and local is $371,000 for a total of almost $900,000. So on the right side, you'll see a graph of how, where we get most of our funding. As you can see, L C F F for 86.8 million dollars, rep, it's about 73% of our total revenue. And then 7% from federal and then 19% from state and then the rest is 1% from local. So here are the changes. So 0.9 million dollars net increase in revenue really came from C D P H Personal Support Grant. So C D P H gave not all districts, there were districts like, including Castro Valley who qualified for this personnel, personnel support grant. This is what we use to, we're using currently to pay for individuals who are helping with the contact tracing as well as the tests. So, and then the increase, we see this around this time lottery tends to increase slightly. And so we're seeing an increase of 0.3 million dollars in the lottery. And then Title I is, is about $130,000 and then local donations there for 0.3 million. In terms of expenditures from, again, from looking at the changes from first interim to second interim, there's a huge increase there under services and other expenses for 3.1 million dollars. And the total is 3.4 million combined expenditures. So you'll see the, the, for salaries and benefits on the right side there, it's a 78% under salaries and benefits. And then we have the other categories there for books and supplies and services. So I want to highlight the changes there that you saw, 3.4 million. That's a huge increase and that's because of the 1.9 million dollars, the plan that you approved back in December, which is the Educator Effectiveness Block Grant. What happens is that is actually a one point, total of 1.9 million dollars, but it, we can spend it over five years. So the plan that you approved back in December is over a five-year period. So, but, so the, the state actually gives it to us this year, but we don't necessarily, we don't need to spend it all in the current year. We can actually plan it for the next five years. At the end of the. At the end of the fiscal year, what happens is any, any carryover or leftover funds, then we just carry over in the next year and, of course, in the next five years. I mentioned about the $200,000 from CDPH, the lottery Title I. And then some services here that we've increased for special education. And then the changes to the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program that we're getting in the current year. And then here is what our ending fund balance looked like. So we ended, we, as a first interim, it's a $17.6 million. And then we have legally restricted, these are all for our restricted funds, a set aside of $1.5 million. And then we do have supplemental funds that we haven't, that are not budgeted, so that we do set those aside for that purpose. And then our Reserve for Economic Uncertainties is $8.1 million, and that's about 6.42%. And this is, again, looking at total expenditures, and that's why that percentage is about 6.42%. Looking at our multi-year projections, it's the current year plus the two years. So this is a little different than what you've seen as a first interim. And that's because if you look at the two years, '22, '23, and '23, '24, you're seeing an increase in the LCFF, and that's what I wanted to highlight, from the current year, $86.8 million to $88, almost $89 million. And then about $100,000 increase in '23, '24. And that is because of the revenue, right? So this is the cost of living adjustment, which is what we also known as COLA. In the current year, we assume that in the current year as the first interim, so we were aware of the 5.07% that's included in the governor's budget, enacted budget. For '22, '23, we heard of the, his proposal that came out last month and we reported to you, sorry, in January, and we reported the changes, or at least his proposal, last month. So that's a 5.33% COLA, Cost of Living Adjustment, in '22, '23. And so that's what we assumed in our multi-year for next year, '22, '23. In '23, '24, we're assuming, assuming a zero COLA, and that's why that change of, I'll go back, it's just a slight change of about $100,000. So again, I wanted to highlight that because that is actually the big difference from first interim to second interim multi-year as far as the '22, '23 LCFF revenue. And then we have in our assumptions, right, it's, we remove all the one-time funds in the, to, for next year and the year after. But we also made sure that with the step-in column increases are included, as well as the changes to the callsters and call purse rates. Before I move on to the other funds, if you have any questions.
So if you go to those columns that look at federal and state revenue, I'm, oh...
Sorry. Go back.
Go more forward. Go forward.
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 The other one.
Yes. Right. So I'm assuming the delta is really about COVID relief funds, right?
Yes.
And do we have to start maybe thinking about ongoing, like, do we have any budgetary process to make us, help us think about what our ongoing COVID costs could be? Whether it's always having masks on hand or, you know, just sort of resiliency going forward?
Right, yes, yes, that question. So yeah, so those are the things that we always look at in terms of multi-year projections. I know that the masks and also the filters, right? So we have a lot, all of our classrooms have two units, which is the air purifier with HEPA filters. So those filters do need to be replaced on a regular basis, quarterly, depending on how, how they're, we use them, right? So what happens is what we project out, how much is it going to cost for all of the units, including all of the masks, additional masks that we purchase? We purchase a lot of, we have thousands of masks this year, so we're good this year. But we do, in our ZBB, which is, we will present that in the next, in April. And so you'll see a line for all COVID-related that we, we're going to need to keep ongoing in the budget.
I just have one question. Maybe, I think I might have asked this before, some months ago. In going from the '21, '22 budget to the '22, '23, the salaries and benefits go from $99 million to $92 and some other expenses there. Why is that?
Yes, good question. Thank you. So under salaries and benefits, so if you're looking at '22, '23, this includes all of our one-time funds, including the COVID funds that we receive from the federal and the state. So then, knowing that those are all one-time funds, then we remove them from our multi-year and the, you know, following year as well as the year after. So, so that's why you're always seeing in the current year, it's always higher than the next year because of those additional funds that we get. Include not just those funds, it's not just the COVID funds, but it's also like donations that we get. So we get donations in the current year when we don't, we don't, you know, assume or project any donations, we, as we receive them, that's when we record them. Thank you. Mike?
If you go to the next one, when you think about those numbers for callsters and call purses, those don't seem as dramatic as they were when we were going through the rapid increase, right? I mean, from your point of view, how bad is that, without knowing if the governor's going to seek additional funding for that, to backfill it? How do you lose sleep over those numbers?
So we, what is actually really good for us is, we know, we get these projections for like, not just all the way to '23, '24, we actually get the five-year projection from callsters and call purses. The governor and also like school services provide all that information for us. So in, when we update our multi-year and we add the additional years as we get closer to, right, to ending the year, we actually project that. So, so they're already in our multi-year, but we always want to make sure that, or at least, we wait for the governor's proposed budget because of the additional money that he might put in towards the call person, call purse, though it's not, we, it's not included in the governor's proposed budget, but I have, I am hearing that this is something that he's also looking into. So there might be some changes in May, when he comes out with his May revision, but we won't know until we get that information.
I was going to say, that's the push from, I know, CASH, AXA, CTA, CSCA, everybody's really pushing for that.
That's along with the effort to increase the base grant as well, right?
Yes.
So that would help us on that...
With all of it, yeah. Yeah. But Ms. Chan, maybe it's important to hear the dollar amount for stirs and purses. I know it was in there, but...
Yeah, so I don't have the, actually, I don't have the slide, but we did have it in other presentation. So I'm actually, I want to make sure that I give the right information, so I'm going to pull it up. And then after this, if it's okay. Any other questions in general fund? So the other funds, we have all the ending fund balances here, and they are all ending and positive, ending balances. So the reason for Fund 10, it's zero, and that's because all of the money that we receive for member districts, they, they come to us, the revenue comes to us, but then we also, as soon as we receive it, we send it right back out to the member districts. But the rest of the funds, they all have positive ending balances. And so, so the total for all of the funds that we have is about $17.8 million. And then, of course, then the next steps there is the zero base budget and then the May revise in May. And the budget and local, local control accountability plan, hearing and adoption will be in June. So for the, going back to the callsters and call purses, we, we started at $3.4 million back in '13, '14. And this year, it's about $11 million. And it's going up, our projection for '22, '23 is, it's $12 million. So it's going up by $2 million. Wow.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Are there any questions? All right. Awesome. Okay. Oh, yes, it's a...
I'll move that we certify the second interim report.
I'll second. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Jennifer, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yeah.
And I will say yes. So the motion is passed. All right, now we can move on. You for alerting me. No. Item E.
Awesome. So as the board is well aware, having all of our students graduate college and career-ready has always been a goal of CVUSD. This has been especially, an especially pronounced need amidst COVID-19. And in recognition of that, the state of California has allocated some one-time funds called the A-3G Completion Grant. Our amazing Director of Secondary has been working very closely with our high schools and our secondary programs in general to present to us the plan for the A-3G Completion Grant. This will be presented twice, once tonight as a presentation, and then later this month for your approval, should you, should the board approve. So without further ado, Ms. Perator.
Thank you very much, Dr. Reiman. The A-3G Completion Grant is based on the requirements for A-3G, and I'm just going to go through those really quickly. I'm sure all of you already know about this, but there are, this is about how kids get into the UC and the CSU system and the requirements for that. There are 15 different high school courses that are required, and they're listed here. I'm not going to go through them for you. I'm, as I said, I'm sure you already know all of this information. The A-3G Grant Improvement, Completion Improvement Grant, that's quite a mathful, was brought forward because the state realized that lots of students did not meet A to G requirements because of COVID-19. And it's, it's, it's broken into three different, different grant amounts. The access grant, the success grant, and the learning grant. And every district got two of the above. So everybody got the learning mitigation grant, but districts either got an access grant or a success grant, depending on their A to G completion rate for the previous year. It is to be used for very specific purposes in order to help our students to have access to more courses, in order to meet those A to G requirements, and also to help students to do credit recovery, which, credit repair, which is different from credit recovery because credit recovery is not A to G and credit repair is A to G. Our summer school is credit repair. We also offer credit recovery at Redwood, for example. We were able to, sorry, so, no, okay. We were able to receive two grants, same as everybody else, and this is the work timeline plan. We actually started working on this in January, way before we knew how much money we were going to get. And then we got a, an estimate of how much we would get, and we worked on it even more. There is a template in our dark tracking system, which we've been using to, to put in all of our information. And then, I think it was last week that we got the, or maybe it was Monday, we got the complete amount on Monday. So all of this work was done before, and then we scrambled a little to add some more things because we got a little more money than we expected. And then we will be refining it. This is our first board, our first board presentation. We'll be refining our plan in dark tracking, and maybe a new template will come out, we're not sure, it hasn't come out yet. So again, we're, we're working as, as we go, but the basics of the plan won't change. Just, there may be some tweaking as to amounts and how many years it can go out, but the basics won't change. So this is our allocation. We qualified for the access grant and, of course, the learning mitigation grant. The 67% success rate, we were at 66.1%. So we, so this is why we got this part of the grant rather than the other part of the grant. When we looked at our data and really examined what our needs were, we found that our math achievement, as you may remember from a presentation earlier in the year, our math achievement is where we really were lacking. We found that students really, math was very hard during the pandemic, and our scores went down in math more than in language arts. And so we're focusing this grant on math and on increasing college and career readiness for our students. And also, we looked at adding more AP classes and changing the access to those classes so that removing the barriers to taking AP classes. And also some more college and career supports for our students. The high school was a very integral in suggesting things that they would like to see happen on their campus in order to increase our A to G achievement. So one of those things was to expand AVID. We have been an AVID district for very many years. We have AVID in our, in our middle schools, in our high school, and in some of our elementary schools. AVID, which I'm sure you already know, really helps students to get prepared for college. And we currently only have 11 seniors in our senior AVID program at the high school, and we'd really like to increase that number and make sure that more students get that access and more students get exposed to all of the wonderful opportunities for AVID. They really, AVID really does prepare students for college by teaching them all kinds of writing strategies and reading strategies and just organizational strategies, as well as the college visits and all of the things that you think of with AVID. But it's the, the really deep level of understanding on how to look at a question and ask the right questions, which seems like a simple thing, but it really isn't. And when you get to college, asking the right questions is vital to your success. So, and in our higher-level courses, that is really important, too. So we would like to add an AVID TOSA, teacher on special assignment, a TOSA. We currently don't have anybody doing this, and it wouldn't be a full-time position, it would just be two periods. But we, we, we really believe that that person would be able to develop a lot of PD programs for our teachers so that we expand AVID way beyond just the AVID classes, but throughout all of the subject areas and use those AVID strategies and expand it also into our other elementary schools. This specifically, an ask from the high school was to add more sections of APUSH, AP US History. It is one of the courses that does not have a prerequisite in it. Many of our AP courses do have prerequisites. We're trying to slowly eliminate those, but this is one course that does not have a prerequisite. And so we often have to turn students away. We often have had more students want to take AP US History than we had sections of. And so this will require training another person in the AP institutes... And so this will require training another person in the AP institutes, getting another teacher trained, possibly hiring a new teacher. And so being able to offer the classes and pay for those extra teacher, teacher time, that way we can eliminate any waiting list and make sure that every student who wants to take APUSH can take it. And then the counselors can also really encourage students to sign up for that course. Our college and career counselor at the high school is currently paid for out of several different grants. Two of those are ending this year. And so we would like to keep that person in that position, and we believe that's a very valuable position for our students. We have been able to expand our, our services in our College and Career Center through some other grants, through CTE grants, but that, the College Career Counselor, we would like to make sure that we are able to keep her for some more time. And this College Career Center is really important for our students. A lot of students go in there. It seems like it would be easy to fill out a college application. Well, any of us who have had a high school student know that it is not easy to fill out a high school application. The FASDA is not an easy document to fill out, and many of our students and families have a really hard time with that. And so having an adult there who's able to help them with that and do that for them is really invaluable. So on to high school math. So we realize that math is our biggest area of need. We currently have a .5 math TOSA, and that person is amazing, actually, and she does incredible work. However, we feel that with the extra need that we saw in math, we really need to do some more math PD. We really need to expand some math intervention, and that we would like to fund the other half of that position out of this grant so that we could have a full-time math TOSA, at least for a few years, to get our math back on track, to help our teachers. The mentoring that goes on in the classroom with a TOSA is amazing, and really the best kind of PD you could possibly have is to have somebody come a model for you, right in your own classroom with your own kids, and also come in and observe what's going on and be able to give you feedback. Those of us who have been teachers at any time in our careers know that, that having somebody come into your classroom and be able to meet with you one-on-one and give you feedback is very valuable. So what are our next steps? We have several next steps because, you know, we just got the, the actual grant amount. So we are going to review and adjust our plan based on this award. In fact, it's already been reviewed and adjusted, and one thing we added to it was to include AP Seminar, right, AP Seminar, which is an AP course that students get the AP credit for. It is not a subject-specific course. It basically prepares them for all other AP classes. So it is not, it, it gets them the extra bump on their transcript and the extra credit, but it's got no prerequisites. We won't be able to add that this year because it takes a lot of preparation to put a new AP course in, but we're looking at adding that for the 23, 24 school year because we have to get a teacher trained in that, too. So that is one of the adjustments we've made based on the extra money that we got. And we're going to refine and complete our plan, put all our paperwork in, give you another board meeting, probably not a presentation, but at least to show you the finalized plan so that then hopefully you will approve it. And then we have to go hire a teacher for our APUSH class at CVHS, hire a math TOSA. So there's a lot of things to do before the end of the school year, but they're all extremely happy things to do. It's nice to have something credibly positive like this when we've had a couple of years of a lot of negative things. So this is really a great, a great program. Thank you. Any questions or should I run before there are questions?
Gary.
Thanks for the presentation. Sounds pretty interesting for sure. Steph, a point to clarify here, maybe. You mentioned hiring some additional people, TOSAs, APUSH teacher, counselor, and so forth. Are they funded by this grant? Is that the intent here? Is that, okay, good. That's, puts my mind a little more at ease.
They're all funded from this grant, yes.
Great, thank you.
Mike.
I'm sorry you were so close with 66.1%. I, I was hoping you could help me understand, what, what, what's our normal A through G completion rate? Is it?
Actually, it's about that.
It is about that.
We saw a very, we saw a little drop. Actually, it's been fluctuating over the past few years. I, I think I presented this at some point, but we, we've had, you know, A to G completion rates very varied over the years. And we did see a small drop, but like by 1% or 2%.
I think over, if you were to look back at over the last four or five years, actually, we're up with A through G completion. There's a balance, however, between graduation rate and A through G completion rate.
Okay.
Where some districts choose to align their graduation requirements, the A through G completion requirements. Of course, you may then see some students not graduate because they don't meet the A through G, but their A through G completion rate will go up. Firstly, we have a very high graduation rate, but our graduation requirements are closer, they're higher than the state requirements, but closer to the state requirements than the A through G. So that's, that's a little bit of the trade-off that you'll see. Although 66.1% these times is actually very considered to be.
And I'd just like to point out, that is a district rate. Castro Valley High School's ADG completion rate is higher than that, but it's a district ADG completion rate. And when you have an alternative program that is not ADG, of course, that's included in your numbers.
Marvina, and then Gary.
Yeah, I, I was going to say about, was it three years ago? I think you were a part of that. I know Gary was a part of that as well. We went through like a, kind of a study, you were here as well, and you were here, about A to G requirement, and it was a really robust conversation for a whole year of like meeting with teachers and, and looking at that and deciding that it is really important to have that option, but not to make it a requirement. So I just remember that. The other thing I wanted to say, I just want to acknowledge, well, actually, it's on the personnel doc, right? Ms. Eldridge. Andrea Eldridge, who's just phenomenal, phenomenal math coach and teacher, is retiring, I believe. It was, I saw her name on the list. She's been saying to us, I'm going to retire, I'm going to retire. I was hoping, I'm hoping she doesn't, but it's going to be huge shoes to fill.
Yeah, I was just going to, two points. The first one was, I was just going to say what Marvina just said, that we did go through about a year-long study of the A to G requirements and decided not to make them a requirement for graduation here because, in essence, we didn't want to conduct a social experiment on the backs of our students. So the second point is, you know, this is for A to G completion, but, and math is a big deal here. You know, when we looked sometime back at our math scores at the high school level, where the Ds and Fs are, it's in math the first two or three years, and we take a beating. And so I hope this will be able to help us not only with the far end of the A to G, but also the near end of the A to G as well.
I just wanted to express my appreciation towards equity in providing opportunity to AP courses. I, I've talked about my own high school experience. I mean, AP courses were based on the color of your skin and income, and I, I really like the idea that the AP Seminar, what a great way of reinforcing to really empower any kid the opportunity to go forward on that path. So thank you for that commitment, and thank you for making that investment.
Jenny?
All right. I have a couple of questions. First of all, the math TOSA teacher on special assignment, could you like explain a little more like what that is, like what the role of that person does?
Yes, absolutely. So that person really coaches our math teachers at all the secondary schools, so including the middle schools as well. They also design professional development for our math teachers. So, you know, we have several professional development days during the school year when the teachers do PD, and the math TOSA designs that. That person also designs individual math coaching and a PD for specific teachers. So she, she or he might go into a teacher's classroom, see what the teacher is doing, make some observations, have a meeting with the teacher, then design some specific PD to help that teacher with, with some specific things that they've noticed, and, and, and expand that way. They also write curriculum and do all kinds of things like, you know, textbook adoption. So for example, we brought data science to the, the board a while ago. That was a new course for the high school for next year, data science, and our math TOSA was the person who did all of that research and, and wrote that curriculum, wrote, not wrote the curriculum, wrote the, the course outline.
All right, thank you. And then also, what was the name of the class you said was the AP class that gave you the grade boost, but is not, like, it helps you prepare for other AP classes?
AP Seminar.
Seminar, and like what would exactly you be doing in that class? Like, I mean, I can't take it because I'm going to be graduating next year, but I'm just curious.
So it's a class where they actually do a lot of preparation in deep reading, critical analysis, how to organize your thoughts in those kinds of classes so that, you know, with AP classes, there is a lot, it's a different methodology for teaching and for learning. And so AP Seminar helps you to, to get that mindset and teaches you all of those skills, which are really critical analysis skills and writing. Please correct me if I'm missing something. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And last question. So as for APUSH, I'm actually taking APUSH right now, and it's to my understanding that, like, when I enrolled in this course, you had to take a test to get into the class because it's like one of like the hardest classes, and I can vouch for that. But now that I've heard that basically anyone who signs up for the class can get in, how does that, I'm just, I don't know how to word this, but I'm just curious like how that goes hand-in-hand with like, like, why are we getting rid of the tests, the prerequisite test to get in while we're, like, there's going to be more students taking it? Is that why we're adding more teachers?
So we're adding more teachers so that the classes can be smaller as well. So any student who wishes to take the class can take it, plus we will have a smaller class size. So all of the students in the class will get a lot more individualized attention. So getting rid of the test to go into the class really broadens the access for all of our students so that anybody can take the class, but it's no good having anybody take the class if you don't then support them because you don't want to have everybody take the class and half of them fail, right? So what would, we will be doing is we will be supporting those students a lot more so that they, they are able to be successful in an AP class. And once somebody is successful in one AP class, it gives them confidence to take another AP class. And I think that all of the skills that they will learn in that class will really, really set them up for life. I used to be an AP teacher, not APUSH, AP English, and I know that the students would come back after they've gone to college and say that, you know, this class is the class that really helped me prepare to be successful in college because I learned how to think deeply and how to analyze things and how to look at things from a different perspective. But it's no good opening access and then not opening support.
Gary.
This is going to sound a little bit like that I disagree with my student colleague here, but I was wanting to say that I think I certainly am happy that you're opening up the ability to take these classes to a broader and, and also getting more, not only making it available, but also making it available physically and making it available psychologically for the kids to take it, that we'll have enough classrooms to be able to take care of them, but also that they can, if they want to undertake the challenge, they can do that. Sorry.
I just wanted to say I really like the idea of having this APUSH open up to maybe students who they may blossom by 11th grade, and maybe they weren't, you know, that much of a student in ninth grade, which is a grade where sometimes kids struggle, but kids can grow and change so easily, so fast, and I think it's really a very good idea to have this open access, but with the support that they may need to bump it up.
It's, thank you for asking that question because this is a really, it's a, you can have a really deep conversation around this, but I think what we have noticed historically is that the mental models in creating those barriers is that only certain kids can do it, and we would never want that. We want to make sure that everybody has access. And, you know, when we talk about unconscious biases that we all have as we grow up and do this work, a lot of times our students who would have had that opportunity wouldn't have it because they, you know, the, the idea was that if you're not this kind of student, you can't really be successful. So that's really why you want to take all of these barriers away so that you have an opportunity. The worst-case scenario is that you need help, and that's why the support is so critical because sometimes when people remove these barriers and then kids fail, the conversation, the, the pushback is, see, I told you they can't do it, which is then really true. It's just that they need more support. So, great question. Thank you. And as she asked about TOSAs, I was like, most kids wouldn't even know, most people don't know what that is because they, they don't see the teacher on assignment because they work with the teachers. They won't have their own classroom, but.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the personnel reports.
So Steph has prepared the personnel report. You'll notice that it's sort of a long list. We're trying to move as quickly as possible to rehire back those recommended teachers on temp. So in the past, we usually take about one or two months, but this time we're going to try to streamline it down to about a week or two. So we're going to get those teachers back that are recommended to be rehired. Also like to announce that on March 19th, we're going to be having a job fair for both certificated and classified to try to fill our positions for resignations and retirements for the 22, 23 school year. So tell a friend, if you're, if you're interested, please join us, we're all means all, and we'll get that going for next school year.
Thank you. I'll move approval of the personnel report. Thank you.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions?
Yeah, so is the job fair in person somewhere? It is in person, it'll be at Castro Valley High School. Excellent. Thanks for that. Thank you.
All right, your vote, Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so the personnel report is approved. All right, item G.
So Assembly 430 was passed in January 1st to afford our classified staff the same March 15th layoff notice, and so we're presenting these layoffs for you. Just a point of order, we're not laying off the complete FTE. These were added time to help with the COVID process with contact tracing or documents. So they're still keep their original time, their FTE, the full-time equivalency for what they had in, before they were increased. So this is just the additional part that we're laying off since we're hoping that COVID will, has seen a decrease and all the documentation process that has occurred this year will go away for next school year.
Thank you for that explanation.
And I would, just, so that was based on the one-time funding that we got. It would be linked to that, right? That's correct.
I move that we adopt Resolution 40.
Thank you, Dolly.
I'll second.
Thank you, Vice President Whitaker. So this is also personnel, so Jennifer, you would not vote. So Mike, your vote, please.
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so Resolution 40-2122 is passed. So, Resolution 40-21-22 is passed. All right, moving on to item H.
I would move that we adopt Resolution 41-21-22 for, to excuse the absence of Trustee Dolly Adams on February 23rd, 2022.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, any preferential votes?
Yes.
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 Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so the resolution is adopted. All right, and then now adopting the minutes of the last board meeting.
I'll move approval to adopt the minutes of board meeting held on February 23rd.
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? All right, Jenny, your preferential vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so the minutes have been adopted. All right, superintendent's report.
Yeah, just a few things. We had our ambassadors visit to Canyon, and it went really, really well. I know Trustee Whitaker and Trustee Howard were there and our community members. And it was really great. They got to hear about our child nutrition program, purchasing in warehouse, and also a little bit about Creekside. So, thank you, Ms. Chan and her team, who really spearheaded that. We had our Community Alliance meeting. We had about 30-some people attending. And it was a really great conversation. Dr. Ryman presented information on ethnic studies, and we had small group discussions. And we did send an email out to everyone about some book studies that we're going to do. Again, that was just a piece of it. There is a lot of information on ethnic studies on our website, including steps and the phases. I've had some site visits. We did go to the PTA at Creekside. And then I was fortunate to be invited to the choir Zero Period, where they are practicing, they were singing a song that's an Iranian song, a Persian song. And they said, can you come and help us with the pronunciation? I have to tell you, they sang it so beautifully before I even said anything. I had tears in my eyes. So, they were just amazing. Again, Mrs. Sadoway is just a gem. And the students, I mean, like 40 students at seven o'clock singing. Yeah, so it was great. And then I attended the Northern California Superintendent's meeting and heard a lot of conversation around the table about budget and all the requirements and things like that. We had a staff development, very successful. Thank you, Dr. Ryman. And then today, in the afternoon, I was able to just go into this professional development for just a few minutes. But I tell you, it was like the best part of my day. Thank you, Dr. Zamora and his team for actually putting together some classified PD after school. There were like 40-some, 48 classified, you know, secretaries and paraprofessionals. And the conversation was so awesome and so rich. And the person, it was all about diversity and equity. And I know that's a part of what Ms. Eagles has been planning and working on. So, just such great stuff happening. And they're going to continue those series. Thank you.
Jenny, is there anything you wanted to add to your earlier report?
I have a big day tomorrow. I am giving my second Rotary speech at the next Rotary level in Foothill High School in Pleasanton. So, hopefully that goes well. And also, the election results are announced tomorrow as well at the high school. So, very interesting.
It's a big day.
Speaking of the high school, swim season is starting, and I have a swim meet on the 23rd, so I will not be here. Yep. Just letting everyone know.
Thank you.
Mike?
I've got nothing, but good luck at this swim meet.
So, as Harveen said, I was at the ambassador's tour of Creekside and the warehouse and so forth. The other thing that I did was I was at the Eden Area ROP meeting last week. And I think the big takeaway from there is that the career grant that they had gotten last year, they're going to get a lot more money this year for it. The state is really bulking that up. And so, that was really good news. And the final thing I'll mention is that next Tuesday at Rotary, if you are interested, we have Laura O'Brien and Candace Tigerman, who are going to talk about the Avid program. So, if you want to hear all about the Avid program, you can either come out to lunch in person at Rodwood Canyon or you can tune in and watch it online. So, the login information is on the club's website, or you can ask me. So, thanks a lot. That's all I have.
Thank you, Gary. Dolly?
Yes, so I was out for one week. But when coming back, I had been studying for the board policies, and then we had a board policy meeting. And that's it.
Vice President Whitaker?
I was also at the Community Alliance meeting. And I just want to thank Dr. Ryman and his team. That was a very great conversation with the community. Loved the presentation, loved the breakout. I think good to a start of a great conversation around that. I was also at the ambassador's tour. They let us try the food. And I just want to say, this is not the lunch from when I grow up. It is much better. And then next week, I'll be at the Special Education Parent Committee.
Thank you. I was also at the Creekside PTA meeting with Harveen and also at the Community Alliance meeting. And yes, it was really good. The breakout rooms, I was, I'm always a little, I don't know, have, struggle with breakout rooms, the social structure of it. But they went well. Everybody was chatty and sharing concerns and hopes for our new ethnic studies program. And then yesterday, I met with Terilyn, who is going to be facilitating our board evaluation next week. So, be on the lookout for an email with an electronic evaluation that we will use as a tool for our workshop next week. And that's it. All right, meeting adjourned.